Dean of the City Council to order, April 25th, 2011. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Simpson.
Here but feeling like a lame duck.
Terazinski, here. Verbic?
Here.
Gallagher?
Here.
Naylor?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Paulson?
Here.
All present?
And if we could please have Alderman, Thomas, Verbic, and Simpson all lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight, please. Go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can all, at the next meeting, stand up in your living rooms and say the pledge. Do you agree?
Or here.
Or here. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear any deletions or additions anyone would like to make to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion then to approve the agenda that has been presented to us?
So moved.
It was moved by Mr. Terazinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thomas. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Terazinski.
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Naylor?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the next item is our special items or presentations and citizen comments. The first, we have several resolutions that we would need to pass tonight. The first resolution is a Resolution 11-27, Resolution commending and congratulating Bertrand Simpson for four years of service to the city of DeKalb as Alderman of Ward One. Please have a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
It was removed by Mr. Terazinski.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Baker. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you got through there, Bert. Resolution 11-28, Resolution commending and congratulating Pam Verbic for 15 months of service to the city of DeKalb as Alderman of Ward Three. May I please have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Removed by Mr. Simpson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Naylor. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. And Resolution 11-29, Resolution commending and congratulating Lisa Thomas for 14 months of service to the city of DeKalb as Alderman of Ward Seven. May I please have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gallagher.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Verbic. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks to all of you. We have three proclamations tonight. The first proclamation is proclamation of Comcast Cares Day, April 30th, 2011. Whereas across the country, on April 30th, 2011, nearly 50,000 Comcast employees and their families will invest in the community in which they live and work by volunteering in hundreds of projects as part of the 11th Annual Comcast Cares Day. And whereas Comcast Cares is part of an ongoing effort Comcast Care program by which Comcast gives back to the communities it serves through support of national and local volunteer partnerships year-round. And whereas on the campus of Northern Illinois University, nearly 50 local Comcast volunteers would gather on Comcast Cares Day to coordinate team-building activities for program participants of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of DeKalb that will enhance this worthwhile program that serves hundreds of area youth and that contribute to the quality of life in the city of DeKalb. And whereas, as the voluntary efforts of Comcast and its employees across the country help make our communities better, places in which to work, and should be recognized and supported, therefore, I, Chris Paulson, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2011, as Comcast Care Day in DeKalb and urge all residents to be cognizant of the efforts of these outstanding volunteers and the citizens who join them. Thank you Comcast. Does anyone from Comcast here tonight accept this? Please come forward. Would you like to say anything?
I just want to thank you for taking the time to say that. We're excited about the project this weekend, and you're all welcome to come out and join us. I'll send the specifics to staff, but it should be a good day, and hopefully the rain will hold off.
Any ideas yet? Maybe this isn't a fair question as to what some of the projects are. What do you?
Actually, they have some activities, games, and other. They're going to have a reading exercise so that the bigs and the littles can get to know each other better.
I think that in talking with the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Coordinator, what they want to
do is give the bigs and littles an opportunity to do things that are free so that the bigs don't have to expend a lot of money. I was a big brother when I went to school here at NIU, and it was tough. It was tough to find activities that I could afford, and I think what they're trying to do now is to give them exercises they can do so they don't have to go to the movies or the arcade or anything like that. So it should be a nice day.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
What's your name, sir? My name is Chris Nelson, Manager of Government Affairs for Comcast. Do you need my address?
No, that's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
The next proclamation is National Arson Awareness Week, May 1st through 7th, 2011. Whereas arson is a serious crime that affects each and every person and can be only stopped when citizens realize the severe damage that arson causes, whereas cities, communities, and neighborhoods are blighted by arson which result in the erosion of tax base and loss of employment, and whereas arson has disrupted our educational and manufacturing systems with the destruction of irreplaceable buildings and artifacts, and whereas natural resources are rendered useless for long periods of time or are completely destroyed, and whereas countless human injuries and deaths result in the needless tragedies caused by acts of arson, and whereas a large percentage of property insurance premiums are used to cover the losses from arson, and tax dollars must be used to pay for the fire extinguishment and investigation of these malicious acts, which is a senseless waste of our precious resources when the majority of the public must directly bear the burden of an individual's criminal act, and whereas the financial loss annually due to arson reaches billions of dollars and does not include indirect losses, both emotional and financial, including funerals, medical, and legal costs, wages, business interruptions, firefighting, and law enforcement efforts which together exceed the direct losses manyfold. And whereas, public awareness is one of the many responsibilities of the DeKalb Fire Department investigators now, therefore, I, Chris Paulson, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do proclaim May 1 through 7, 2011, as National Arson Awareness Week in the city of DeKalb, and urge our citizens to recognize the contributions that the DeKalb firefighters have to make our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council, and one of the things about our Fire Department program with our fire investigators is simply its additional duty, and it's a quiet and confidently done task done by employees of the Fire Department with our law enforcement partners in the case of arson, accepting tonight as two of our fire investigators, Captain Kevin McCauley and firefighter paramedic Drew Rells.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, you guys. Do a great job.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And the final proclamation is Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 through 7, 2011. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk serving in the spaces between governance and administration provides the professional link between the citizens and the local governing bodies and the agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all in the DeKalb community, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center of city records and the functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, now therefore, I, Chris Paulson, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, do recognize the week of May 1 through 7, 2011, as Municipal Clerks Week. Steve, you want to come get this and give a speech up there or not? You don't get to say much at these meetings anymore, so here's your chance. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks to all. The next item on the agenda are citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to come forward who want to address issues that are not on tonight's agenda. So we have one request here. Herb, would you please come forward?
Mayor Council, before I start?
Back off of it a little bit.
Before I start, I want to make sure I'm here at the right time. I have some comments that have been weighing on me for several years, actually. I wanted to make them before the budget hearings start, and if my understanding is correct, this is really the last chance for citizen comments before the budget hearings because you'll be another.
I would think so. We have a meeting next Monday night as our first budget hearing before the workshops.
Yeah, the workshops, and you don't want citizen comments on inauguration day. Okay, I will then give my comments today. I have a few comments about the budget addressed to both the incoming and continuing council members. My first concerns increasing the online availability of all city documents. Doing so promotes transparency while enabling council staff and citizens to readily trace out precedents. Web space is inexpensive, search engines efficient. This effort to make minutes, agendas, policies, and support documents prepared for council as well as for all city committees must be continued, and the modest funding for doing so included within future budgets. That's a very specific request. The other three things, four things, are things that have been niggling for years and general philosophy about budget-making. First of all, council and staff have already reduced the size of local government dramatically. In doing so, I fear the council has been overly responsive to those whose major concern is to limit the scope of government and lower taxes irrespective of the consequences to the common wheel. While few enjoy paying taxes, citizens such as myself recognize the importance of public services and that taxes are needed to pay for these services. While council must seek out efficiencies, council should not simply capitulate to the naysayers and continue to cut back when vital services are already in short supply. Second point, in times of fiscal stress, the temptation is to think only about the here and now while ignoring future needs. Doing so can be penny-wise and pound foolish. Allowing the community to physically deteriorate by deferring maintenance or not investing in neighborhood and commercial redevelopment might save money today but will cost more in the future. Public expenditures are not simply about paying for immediate services but are investments in our shared future. Three. Third, and here the council has already taken some significant positive steps, I'm just reinforcing this, hard data, not shibboleths, should guide budgetary decisions. Too often, and this is over many years of my watching council, decades of watching council, actually, often it appears as if council members in making some budgetary decisions are responding to anecdotes, our comments made by a handful of individuals are extrapolating only on their own personal experiences rather than stepping back and seeking out relevant hard data. We need data-driven decision-making, not decision-making by anecdote or through unexamined analogies. It is the responsibility of the council to base budgetary decisions on hard evaluative data, and it is the responsibility of the staff to make sure such data are available and understood. Last point's a little more conceptual. If I understand the budget documents correctly, each of your budget statements begins with a set of broad-scope goals for the future of the community, and these goals are very important, yet I often feel that they're not paid close enough attention to when you get into the details of budget-making. Budgetary discussions of necessity often focus on the minute, a position here or a piece of equipment there. When making these small decisions, however, the broad-scope goals must not be forgotten. Council members should ask themselves, how does this position or that piece of equipment help accomplish this broad-scope goal? And with that in mind, with that information in mind, you'll be better able to decide competing priorities of the separate city departments. In other words, step back, always be thinking of the broad picture, even if you're just down to thinking about one position and one department. Anyway, those things have been niggling in my head for years, and I just wanted to share them, and this seemed to be the appropriate time. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Herb. Any other citizens like to come forward at this time? Okay, the next item is our consent agenda. These are items that are brought in omnibus vote unless someone would like to have one item removed. I would request that we remove item four, Resolution 11-30, the proposal for city attorney services be removed to discuss. Any other would like to be removed? Hearing none, do I hear a motion then to approve the consent agenda that has been amended? Has amended.
So moved.
Removed by Mr. Simpson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Terazinski. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Alderman, Verbic?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Naylor?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Terazinski?
Yes.
Mayor Paulson?
Yes. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items then?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Terazinski.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Simpson. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Naylor?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Terazinski?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Need I?
Okay, now we'll go to Resolution 11-30, authorizing the mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois to issue a request for proposals for attorney services. Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Simpson. Is there a second? Guess it dies for a lack of a second.
Oh. We want to talk about this. You were a little quick to the draw there.
Is there a second?
I already spoke, that created it.
Okay, Mr. Baker seconded it? Okay, I have a suggestion on this issue. I would certainly think that everyone should weigh in on this and can weigh on this, and I certainly think that that's a good idea. We've discussed this several times, and circumstances have changed, and I think it's important that the community understand what the circumstances are and why they've changed. I would be hesitant, I think, for us to take a final action on this tonight since that two weeks from tonight, we will have three new members up here, and I think for us to move forward with a formal resolution might not be fair to the other council. It's your wish. I think that the experience that you all have and the discussions you've had would be vital, but I'm concerned that if we move forward with anything, that it may be reversed. So those are just my personal feelings. And I'll share also that I also believe that there are three options out there. I believe that we should keep the city attorney at status quo. I'm not opposed to the looking into the RFPs for one particular position and possibly advertising for the second, and I'm very much opposed to outsourcing at all. So I've made my case. Mr. Simpson.
I'm sorry that we're in this position. I agree with the mayor. I myself was diametrically opposed to outsourcing any of our legal authority and definitely against outsourcing all of it, but I'm afraid we're in a position of having to go forward with considering the matter. I think it's symptomatic of us as a council in troubled times trying to find the most economic and efficient way to get big pieces of our city business done which costs large amounts of treasure. Even though I do believe we talked about it at some length, I still think we rushed a little bit too quickly to judgment, and I would like to encourage, I will be abstaining from voting on this, by the way, but I would like to encourage this council and the reconvened council that will meet at the next meeting to take a more fine-tuned look not only at this issue but at others as they move forward in continuing difficult budget times to consider, as we should, outsourcing things. I think this one bit us in the tail a little bit, and I don't think we anticipated how much, and I think the city is in a weakened position because of it.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Well, I think that since the bid proposals will be here in time for the new council to weigh in and decide, I think it's appropriate to go forward. And we're not actually putting it out for bid, it's called a request for proposal, is that RFP? What that means is that if a law firm comes in and they see what we want but have suggestions on how to make it more efficient or put themselves maybe in a more cost-effective position than, say, a boilerplate answer to it by a different law firm, we might end up with a lot of creative solutions that we can't even imagine right now. And so I don't really want to stall this process. I think we need to go forward and see what we get. We don't have to take the proposals at the other end. We don't have to decide based on one particular item. That's where the debate and the input from the new council will be especially important when we actually get these proposals and then read through them.
Thank you. Mr. Naylor?
I would defer to Lisa.
Okay, Ms. Thomas?
I would say absolutely, we need to look into this and move forward today on it. I think it'd be irresponsible of us not to check into other sources, and we may come out stronger and more efficient from this.
Thank you. Mr. Naylor?
I guess I would move to postpone this until the first meeting in May.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone this discussion with the new council until the first meeting in May. Any discussion? Mr. Simpson?
I would vote in favor of postponement.
Any other discussion?
Can you do that after you say you're going to abstain? City Attorney's nodding yes? He has that option?
He does.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's do a roll call on that, please.
So what are we voting on again?
We're voting on to postpone this resolution for the first meeting in May when the new council is seated.
Alderman, Naylor?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Simpson?
Yes.
Terazinski?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Gallagher?
No.
Three aye, four nay.
Motion fails. Further discussion on the resolution on the floor? Yes, Ms. Verbic. Go ahead.
We had quite a bit of discussion about this just a couple of weeks ago, and I was kind of surprised to see this come back, and this is, of course, even a third version. We had two versions we looked at before, outsourcing just the city attorney position, outsourcing the entire legal department which consisted of three persons, the two attorneys and our legal assistant. And this version is just outsourcing the two, the city attorney and assistant city attorney's position. So after much discussion and back and forth, I think we probably would hear all the same comments if we were to go back and forth again. We felt it best based on what the staff desired as far as having at least an assistant city attorney and the legal assistant staying in the city hall because there's many day-to-day items, routine items, that it isn't necessary to have the city attorney available for all of those particular items. And also, they felt that that would maintain those positions at a lesser cost rather than paying the full amount per hour of an outsourced attorney, which it's, we don't know yet, but we're anticipating that that may be more expensive. So we arrived at our decision to just put out a request for proposals for the city attorney position. I am at a confused point as to why we're now considering a third proposal here, but I would just voice my support of maintaining the status quo, making a few minor corrections to that request for proposal for the city attorney position, and as Alderman and Baker say, let's see what these people have to suggest, see how much it's going to cost. And the partner to that would be to advertise then for a new assistant city attorney. Unfortunately, Don is taking another position, and so if we state definitively that this is what we would like to do, then I would think that that would give the public and interested persons a guideline as to what direction this council would like to take.
Thank you.
Was there a motion in that, or?
We already have, that's the decision we already made. If we do something new, that would overturn that, I guess.
Mr. Baker?
Would that be correct?
Well, you could make a motion if you thought it would pass, but I don't want to see this mess up. That could model things, that's certainly one of the things that we are going to get back in proposals is since anybody picking up a packet is going to know that it's, could be a mixed reaction, they'll probably give us different prices and different proposals. That's what a request for proposal is, but just for boilerplate, we're sending it out now for both of the attorney positions to be bid on, with our clerk to remain on staff.
I guess what I heard Ms. Verbic say is that she doesn't want to support that, that she's really only wanting to support what the original discussion was some time ago to RFP for one position, and she's suggesting that we put an advertisement out and try to hire physician in Don.
What I heard, maybe I'm wrong, was that that was what I wanted, was both of those options to go out there, one with both the attorney and assistant attorney position to be bid or just the main attorney to be bid.
Oh, they're suggesting.
And that got voted down six to one, I think, against me, so I didn't know what you were getting at there.
Okay, if I'm.
Please respond.
If I'm not wrong, I think they're suggesting that we replace one with the other. Am I wrong, or were we going to put out both requests for proposals?
You want to address that, Mark? I think they're dragging, we're trying to give Mark direction, poor Mark sitting over there.
I know.
Yeah, we had this discussion in closed session, and we demanded it come into open session.
And that's what we're doing now.
And that's what we're doing now. Now you're suggesting we start over.
Well, let's hear Mr. Bernacki's direction that he thought, that I believe he was giving.
Here's the history, as we understand it. Your last regular meeting, Kyle, we discussed this, and Mr. Baker, I believe, made a motion or a suggestion that we solicit or submit two RFPs, one for just the city attorney position and one for the entire department.
Correct. I'm understanding correctly.
That did not gain consensus from the city council. At that time, the consensus that the council did have was to solicit RFPs for just the city attorney position and retain in-house the services of the assistant city attorney and the legal assistant. As of right now, that is your official direction. In closed session, I informed the council that our assistant city attorney, Don Dittier, has submitted a resignation and will be moving on to another location. And as an alternative to filling that personnel position, the council in closed session directed me to bring into open session this item that is before you today, and that is to outsource legal services except for this legal assistant, the clerk position. That was the direction you gave me in closed session. I took that direction, I've placed this on the agenda. Now, if you wish to modify it further, but Ms. Verbic's right, as of right now, the official position of the city council is to outsource just the city attorney unless you modify it further with this resolution or something additional.
The city attorney or the city and assistant city?
The resolution is for both.
This one reflects the direction you gave me in closed session.
Thank you. Yes, please, Mr. Terazinski.
Thank you. I guess I recall the history pretty much along the lines the city manager does. For purposes of this, I think the initial discussion was about costs and efficiency and gaining some savings to the city, and that going outside was, you know, we had an opportunity to do that. Since that time, though, our condition has changed, and because of that change, I think it's necessary for us to look at both positions. If we're going to do this, and it's the will of the council, I did not support that, but at this point, it's the will of the council to look at this from an outside perspective, and I would be for looking at both positions now because of the loss of our assistant city attorney. And that is a significant change to the condition that we were in. I'm not sure of our ability to hire into something that looks, if we're looking at outsourcing, that that is a very difficult position to hire into, into a circumstance such as that, without some reassurances, and I don't know that anyone here can give such reassurances as to the long-term longevity of a strategy such as this that's playing out only based on what the RFP provides to us, what the cost and efficiency gain is going to be presented to us by the RFP and the third parties, and I look forward to seeing what those are at this point, because that is the will of the council. So I would support this proposal of going out with both positions. If somebody wanted to modify this, and Alderman Baker had suggested doing multiple RFPs, I guess I would, I'm not opposed to that, but I think we do need to get something that covers both positions so that we are covered in a longer-term position, and I too look forward to our new participation of the change in council, to the extent that, you know, they may want to add something to this process, but they can view that at the time we get the proposals and see what the cost efficiency improvements are. I'm afraid that's where we're at, in my view.
Mr. Simpson?
I still fully intend to abstain, but I feel compelled to say, if we're trying simultaneously to look for legal counsel and assistant legal counsel, do you really potentially want to take out of the hands of the legal counsel you may hire, any input he or she may have on his or her assistant? Really? I'm just asking.
Other discussion? Mr. Naylor?
I just wanted to add that my reasoning for postponing obviously is because you're going to have three new Aldermen up here in two weeks, and the whole situation may change, and they too may have several different ideas as well, and you're going to go all the way back through a process again, potentially. Also, you could save a lot of time, not only on staff, but on those proposers out there that may be lining up to propose, if they are, and then at the last minute get changed. So I would still strongly suggest that the council might want to give further consideration of that. I don't think two weeks is going to kill the issue by any means. However, if you do go forth with requesting some elements and not by postponing it, in the proposal request, there's still, I don't believe, is a comparison of apples, apples, oranges, oranges with regards to the residency and accessibility of whether it's the city attorney or the assistant city attorney, and whether or not those individuals are going to be in-house or still out-house in their own private offices, and I don't believe that's spelled out in the proposal as to whether those people would be stationed, located here 24/7 or at least seven and a half hours in a day, so that they do have full accessibility to the staff, and the staff likewise has accessibility to those. I don't know, is that?
Well, again, that was purposely left out of the proposal. It's going to be part of the evaluation of the firm submitting their proposal.
I guess you don't know, though, if we want to really truly compare apples, apples, oranges, oranges, what impact that would have upon the cost and the level of service being provided, because if you had attorneys, legal services, you know, located somewhere, say even outside the city of DeKalb, you're assuming that they're going to be nearby or within reach, but that may not be ultimately what happens. Then you go back through, of course, there's going to either be added cost or less cost to those people being here on duty seven and a half hours a day, or whatever it is that the management folks work here. I think something needs to be put in there for clarification, not only for our part, but for the proposers, so that they know what the city wants.
Mr. Baker?
I think it needs to be purposely left out, because if, say, for instance, one law firm has a location within a few blocks of DeKalb, that's going to be one scenario. If another law firm is going to send down a representative or upper representative or in-from-Chicago representative to be here certain hours during the week in our office, that's another scenario, but that's part of the evaluation process, and that's part of what I think at this point, our three new other people are going to help us figure out when we see those proposals. We're going to look at all of them, I presume. Is that correct, city manager? Do we get to see all of those proposals? They're not just going to be?
The selection process hasn't been decided. Certainly, I think some or all of the council will be involved, because you're going to ultimately approve the contract. But that process hasn't been decided.
Well, that could be something that the three new people could participate in. I mean, if I had my druthers, we'd see every single proposal in its entirety and debate them completely out in the open, but if you want to go through selection process like we did the consultant, then I'd be amiable towards working out something logical. But that's certainly something that when we get the proposals, we're going to see some very interesting differences, I'm sure.
Any other discussion? Yes, please, Ms. Verbic.
Well, regardless of whether you want to approve this, regardless of whether this resolution gets approved, or if we leave the status quo, just sending out a request for proposal just for the city attorney, I don't think postponing is going to do anything at all for the city staff, because I think we've already had a few weeks' delay and kind of puts them in a bind as far as court calls and so forth. So I think we really have to move forward on this, get some feedback, and get somebody in here. I personally thought that that would go faster if we advertised for an assistant city attorney, because I only imagine the request for proposal procedure might take more time. I really don't know the timeline on that, but I'd like to hear from the city manager as to which one would be the more efficient approach.
I think in any event, you're looking at a minimum 30, perhaps 60 days before you would have a contract to approve or me hiring a replacement for Dawn. Because the advertisement process is probably at least 30 days, and then interviews, shortlisting, depending on how many applicants we get or contracts we get, shortlisting, and then bringing it to council for approval, probably 60 days from the go, the start date.
So you say either way, it would be about the same timeline?
Correct. And it's to a point now where regardless of how expeditious the council may or may not want to act on this item, I have no choice. I will be selecting some attorneys to perform interim services on our behalf until such time we make this final decision, or we select the final candidate for the contract or for Dawn.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Baker?
This could be very exciting. Alderman Terazinski and I were on the selection process for the consultants, and we were charged with what can we get for $50,000. Well, when we thought we had it nailed down to what we wanted for that $50,000, and we selected the firm, we got what we thought we wanted for $50,000, we got them to do it for $25,000. And then they came back and said, well, here's what we'd really like to do for you, here's what we think you need, and it led to the product that has helped our city be able to meander through these really tough times. And I'm hoping that something like this comes out of the proposals when it comes down to which firm to pick. And I really want to get going on this so we can give our city manager the tools that he needs to be able to run our city, and that's consistent and ongoing legal advice. So I'd like to call the question, and then we go ahead and vote on this.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to?
If he's calling the question, the vote is.
What is the call of the question? I've never understood that.
That means there's no more debate.
Well, more need I see?
You immediately vote on whether to bring the item to a vote.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just whether to bring it to a vote, and then we vote on the item.
Correct. Okay.
Because we could go on all night.
This is a vote, does that need a second?
It, no.
Okay, he's calling the question as to whether we should vote with no further discussion? Is that the way I interpret that?
Yes.
Please, roll call, please.
Alderman Comas?
Yes.
Simpson?
Abstain.
Terazinski?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Naylor?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Six I, one abstention.
Okay, now we're on to the original with no further discussion proposal to ask the, direct the city manager to move forward with getting RFPs for all these services, with the exception of the city clerk, or not the city clerk.
Legal assistant.
The legal assistant. Okay. Let's do a roll call on that.
Alderman Simpson?
Abstain.
Terazinski?
No.
Verbic?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Naylor?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Comas?
Yes.
Four I, three N. Two N, I'm sorry, five I, two N.
Okay, so you got your direction, and thank you for sharing with the public that we are having to contract out at this point in time, so that we know that we're at least getting legal services as needed on a temporary basis. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the purchases and bid awards. Approval of a recommendation to award the department generator bid to, fire department generator bid to Mascol Electric in the amount of $53,499. May I please have a motion to award this bid to Mascol?
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Naylor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Discussion or questions, please, of the chief? You want to give us a?
Sure. Mayor Calhoun, for your consideration, and I, what we would like to do is replace a generator that provides emergency standby power in a power outage situation, so that that station can remain in a response capability. This is an example of critical infrastructure in the city that has become dated, and we've actually deferred this purchase several times over the last many years. Where we're at right now is that the generator in question is a 1972, is currently, when it runs, allows some emissions to get into the station, carbon dioxide, to be specific. It also has some reliability issues in that it does not always timely start. Now, those repairs have been facilitated by the on-duty firefighters, and being a generator that was built in '72, it's not efficient nor provides all the power necessary to do the facility. So we did an open bid on this, and ironically, this was several months ago. We also deferred even at this current time because of spending the money. And the open bid process, the generator bid went to Mascol Electric in the amount of $53,449. This will take the generator out of the basement, where it has some vulnerabilities to flooding, and place it outside the station and make it consistent with other properties in the city, including the other two fire stations.
Thank you, chief. Any questions of the chief?
Just a couple quick items, and thank you for mentioning the other stations, so they're in compliance with this level of capacity or close to it?
Yes.
If I understand the capacity information that was provided in the backup materials, just to clarify, this is a substantial improvement in capacity.
Yes.
And more than double the capacity requirement of the current fire station itself.
Right, in our estimations, instead of powering critical circuits like the old generator does, it will provide power for the entire station, which we do not have that capability right now with the old generator.
Okay. Just from a cost standpoint, was it examined as to what it would take to be at 100%, or is there a significant difference, I guess, is the question?
The larger generator you get does cost more money, and that was probably some of the issues with our original purchase when we moved forward. We feel that this purchase will provide enough power for the whole station, and we don't need to have a larger generator, per se. This should be more than adequate.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the chief? Roll call, please.
Alderman Simpson?
Abstain.
Terazinski?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Naylor?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Comas?
Yes.
Six I, one abstention.
Bid award passes. Okay, we're on to ordinances first reading. The first ordinance is 11-15, rezoning property located 1145 Rushmore Drive, Hope Haven, to PDC, PDC, Plan Commercial Development Commercial to PDR, Plan Development Residential. May I please have a motion to receive and file this?
So move.